Recording in progress.
Okay, we're live.
All right, I'll open up this meeting of the main planning board. Today's date is March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and the time is seven oh three P M. Tonight, you have a full board here in town hall. Please note, this meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means members of the public, members of the board, and applicants can participate here in town hall or virtually through the Zoom link. Please note, this meeting is being. Bill, should we skip to item two?
Yeah, we can do the minutes later, and I have two sets of minutes now, so.
All right, let's open up. A request for determination for fourteen to sixteen Hillside Street. Justin, thanks for coming in. Bill, do you want to give the board a background on this?
Yes, and 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 Justin has prepared a presentation, a little short presentation, but in in a nutshell, there was a in the original housing design, there was a portion of the house that was removed for the renovation. I think Justin explained why he wanted to reestablish it for an entrance. It was interesting. I think it was requested by building department.
We taken it down due to structural. The structural makeup of it was not in sound condition as well as taking it down was going to give us more space for that parking spot if we had. But since they're not doing that. To help with some egress and firestorm.
So anyway, in conversation with the building commissioner, building commissioner was hesitant to give a building permit as the there was a slight differential from what was originally approved last month by this board. So while we the building commissioner felt that it was minor and but recommended that we bring it to the board for just a determination, a major or minor modification. And I'll let the applicant run through his presentation, whatever you want. If you're ready to start, if you have any questions to me before we start, we can.
All good. Maybe share a screen too, but I will share it just in case. There you go. And you just know that.
Okay.
All right. So essentially, this text just goes through what we just kind of gave verbally. So let me just get through just so we can get to the meat of it and then we can go from there. So this is the plot plan of the the existing right here. This concrete slab piece was where the existing shed was on the side of the house. And we had taken it down because it was going to give more space for this, and it also wasn't structurally sound, so we'd have to kind of take it down to rebuild it anyways. So this just zooms into that. So that would be what we're rebuilding on the lower level. And to provide egress and space for mechanical, which would house the sprinkler system for the property. Now that it's three units. In terms of dimensional requirements, it's it's within all of those because there's a this is zoned in a zero side yard setback. So we don't have any issues there. It's not altering any of the parking plan or any of that portion. And I just I could put it here. The dimensional requirements just show it there. So there's there's nothing that it affects or impacts in terms of, you know, coverage or setbacks or anything like that. I have one more slide, but no, that was that was the extent of it. So. Yeah, basically, just rebuilding this up one story, which this is a walkout basement, so it'd be essentially level with the the ground floor of the first level. And that's that's what we're asking for determination of. Questions you want?
A little confused there to grade there. Assuming the the old parking area and the old stairs into the building are at zero grade. What's the grade of the new addition with both its bottom and its top?
So the first floor of the residence is probably plus two and a half. Because there's three steps in here. So over here, there was three steps that went into the first level of the old shed that was there. And it drops down, so you'll have the addition will go up to about like a hundred and six inches, including structure, which would put it just above the the ground level of the parking there.
There's a fence, I think, where the old parking was before the big drop down to where this thing.
Yeah, so where where that shed came off at that parking level, there's a fence that went into that old shed. And so if we didn't put this up, we would have to complete that fencing anyways, and we may have to complete this fence anyways as a guard ground.
Are you about, is there a drop from the old parking?
Yes, yep.
There's a fence before you fall off.
Yep, yep.
How tall is that fence?
Approximately four feet, I would think, so it's straight out.
The roof height of this vision.
Yes.
Okay, and the side fence, how tall is that? So the, or is that a fence or is that a slope along on the other part?
So this portion right here is a retaining wall across, and so the fence in between is at the ground level of that walkout of the backside, which is walkout.
So.
No, in the front, it comes up to, is there a fence in between them at the like at the street?
No.
Okay.
No. And that was part of the.
I went over and did a look for the.
It's okay. It's part of the issue why the the neighbor had come to the meetings because
Right, right.
His car access is difficult if there would be a fence there, so.
Well, that outline. There's a there's a door. How much? Is there room for the doors or? Get out, how do we do that?
To the fence?
Into the building.
There's or out from building. I assume it's a fire because, right?
Right.
So I don't quite understand people get out. Okay, that's still there.
So this whole portion would be eight feet and the distance is eight foot six.
The whole portion, what are these?
So with the door, with the door swung open and this shed being rebuilt, that would be a total of eight feet and the distance is approximately eight foot six there.
Okay, this is the property line?
Correct.
So the door will swing over the property line?
No.
Okay.
It'll be six inches and from the property line.
Okay.
And it's all up in the gray. So when you walk out that door, what do you see?
When you walk out that door, you'll be at grade.
At the lower level, at the lower level. Six inches away from the fence.
Correct.
But there is a fence there, there's a how tall fence there when you walk out that door?
About a four foot fence.
The low, the low, the lower one?
The lower one, yeah.
Like on the other side of the fence?
Grade at the same level.
Butter side?
Yeah.
But it's not a shed though. It's going to be addition to the building, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I don't know the correct terminology. It was kind of a, I don't know.
It's like a mechanical room part of the building.
That's what it will be, and it was kind of just a.
But it's going to have the same concrete footprint.
Yes, that it had.
Yeah.
Yep. They were not expanding that.
So the roof, the roof is basically going to be at about or a little above grade at the driveway?
Correct.
The end here is directly.
Yeah, it won't be a driveway because it'll be.
Well, yes, the the non driveway.
Yeah, the non driveway. I think we're going to convert some of it to a garden.
Fire is okay with that egress? It's a door width along a fence in a building?
That would be the secondary egress. So I reviewed it with Rick and
and Bill, what's our role today? Would this is a
Yeah. This, we gave, we issued the special permit for a multifamily use in the D O D. And so what the applicant is asking for is a determination if the request is a minor modification of the existing special permit allowing the three units. So or is it a major that if it was a major, we'd start, you know, with a new public hearing and everything? I think that that in this case, you know, the the use is not changed on. My opinion is that it would be a fall under minor modification. It's up to the board. Building Commissioner has gone as far as he can without. He wants to, you know, what's because, you know, have it on direction on that.
There anything coming through the roof?
Any penetrations, answer anything? No, no. It'd be housing the tanks, the tanks for the fire suppression system. Well, that's the extent of it. But no bands or penetrations.
No questions? Anything else, Sam?
No, I have anything else, so it's.
I'll make a motion to determine that this is a minor modification.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this? Any opinions? I would like to share.
No, I I I agree. I just wonder a little bit about their story about people getting on that roof. And then jumping down or animals. I don't I don't know, you know.
Yeah, so I might have those concerns too, but is that sort of our scope for tonight?
Right. You're looking at, yeah, like it's you're looking at the multi, really the multifamily use is a change. Yeah, I hope I mean. I never thought about that, but it's like. I I I, yeah, I'm I'm with you on that. Just.
Any other comments, questions?
I had that thought too.
All in favor for the determination minor modification, please raise your hand. Five zero, five zero for minor modification. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you. Oh, I got everything ready next there.
Okay. Good evening. You build truck on up there?
Uh, electric fire. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Should you keep it like an oil?
Yeah. Um, wow.
I go, what's next?
Next, it's, well, we can admit real quick if you want.
No. It's pretty fun. And we're just getting this stuff together. So item three has a number of sub items. And as we discussed.
Are you going to move on to the public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, okay, just for clarification of the board, just so we're straight. Good night. Okay. Can I recap, Mr. Chair, real quick? Okay. Um, we're going to reopen. We continued some items. Most you had some little tweaks that you wanted. I kept a list of the tweaks. I made them in what is on. What I've uploaded, it has the tweaks in it. So if there's any changes you want to make, that's fine, but they should have them. I have a list of what you asked for here, I think. And so items, when we go here through all the way until we get to inclusionary zoning, okay? Inclusionary zoning, we have not opened yet. That was one that we just we advertised. So what I would like to do is just make sure that when when we want to do inclusionary zoning, we open it because that needs to be open. So, you know, we would, I would like to get votes individually on whatever items. And remember, we're recommending approval. We're not on we're not making, you know, we're not, we're not making a recommendation or anything other than directly the goal. The last thing I would ask you to do is, I think we can go through these quickly. But I would like to say the A D U. I'll vote over that because we I worked with Bill and Natalie in the last last week and the town council and everything, and I made a list. I I have given you the final product. But I kept the list of what was changed or what we had to change and why. So I'll take a little more time if you're interested in it, but so that's what what would work for me. So if what I would ask, Mr. Chair, is if you reopen items. Reopen the items from the public hearing, and we can just go right down, but then just want to make sure we we open.
Can we open it first and then discuss them all together? Wait, never mind. That's a good question.
Any of them?
We can, I mean, we might as well just open the conclusionary by itself after we put the other one away.
We could, okay, or we could do a closure first. We don't. You don't want to reorder. Okay, just don't, we don't want to forget to open. That's my point.
I won't forget. You told me seven times. That was it, actually. That was the, that was the one.
You know.
I will.
I'm trying.
I will reopen it, reopen the hearings for items under public hearing items three. This would be opening up, reopening the hearing for items A one through I one, which which were continued from February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Here, Bill. So that is more items motor vehicle rental through minimum square footage on the agenda. It always have been, the hearing for those items have been reopened. For the continued.
Yeah, that's.
And I won't forget the inclusionary zoning by law.
You stop.
I said that.
Yeah.
Um, why don't I just motor vehicle rental? The board. Okay. Stop this. Motor vehicle. Rental. I think you had it except. No, it's. Okay. Motor vehicle, whatever, what do we change here? We changed so, oh, the table. Okay, we want to make sure that we had this table A dash use. So this is, this is what we're, we want to make sure we table A dash use is, this was our our sequencing of the words you guys wanted. Okay, so that's what was changed there. This was a, we had no other changes to motor vehicle use. Um. And the purpose of this, if you want me, I think you guys all know why I had this, but.
Can I do a recommendation now?
Yeah, why don't we do a, if we do a recommendation, that would probably be good, and we do have it. Yeah, I think that's if that's okay, Mr. Chair, I think that would be a good idea.
That's fine. What the working did, we recommend this particular.
Yes, recommend the the amendment of this. Motivating or else.
Bill, Bill, you want to try to make that motion?
Yeah, I'm going to motion to recommend approval of the article regarding amending section three point one two, table A news regulations for business uses and to amend section one definitions regarding motor vehicle rental companies and motor vehicles.
Slate correction, section eleven definitions.
Section eleven, yes, thank you.
I'll second that. All in favor to recommend, please raise your hand.
You say individually?
No, you meant we.
Oh, individually, great.
Not, we can have a handle. So all in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. And it's five zero to recommend.
Good, thank you. The next item is construction business. We again, we fixed the table name. But the big difference for this one was we called it, we call it construction business office. And then for the definitions, we added text, which the board asked me to word smith down here. So regarding, this was about outdoor storage. And so what we added here is structure business is not exempt from the requirements of governing outdoor parking, nor does it include outdoor storage of equipment or destruction or other type materials. So that was what the board had requested me to add. And it's just creating the new category for construction office, construction business office.
Any questions? You want to try to make motions then?
I'll make a motion that we recommend section three point one point two use regulations, table A use for business uses. And amend section eleven definitions to include the definition of construction business office. Recommend to town meeting.
Yes.
I'll say. All in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. Five zero to recommend.
Health club, I don't think we had you can even get this. Oh, yeah, we did.
Bill, red. Bill, can I double check or something?
That's right.
We don't have anybody on, right?
We didn't. I, we still don't.
Okay. No, we don't have to ask the color.
Oh, no, no, I was, I keep it loud, but no. This is not, I thought that people. Warm and bored.
The damn weather.
Now, I have here. I had left out the header here.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so there's the headers added, but basically health club, we're we are, it's just for consistency, it's changed at the center. Because it makes it self clubs good and it, there's no changes to the where it goes, just the terminology. Anybody?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the town meeting to amend the zoning bylaw for three point one two table and use regulations. Changing fitness club to health club and in section eleven definitions. Change that definition from fitness center to health club as well.
I'll second that. All in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. That's five zero.
He hesitated. I thought he was going to go there, but he hasn't.
That's so far.
I know, he put the the town meeting part at the beginning.
The next one was yards. We didn't have any comments on the last one. On the we just did this, we continued it. This is the same. This just establishes text, it adds illustration, but it establishes text that the building commissioners request this one specifically, and he wrote this. I think we went through.
Any questions? Do you want to try to make a motion?
No, I'll give it a minute.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend the town meeting amending section four point one dimensional requirements to include what's shown as figure one in this in the meeting tonight. And amend section eleven definitions for text that is stricken is stricken and text that is underlined is being added. All in favor of the condition, please raise your hand. Five zero to recommend, Bill.
Hey, yeah. Um, we, well, I don't get to skip our long stuff again, who I don't.
No, it's, we're in the corner. Let's go to F one use table references.
Go to which one?
Use tip.
The one with the yellow highlights on it.
Yeah, I really want to know, yeah.
Well, oh, yeah, ask me why they're there.
Why are they there, Bill?
Um, they're there because everybody thought it was.
Too confusing to not know what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. It was, um, no, it is just reordering the language here of table A use, table A dash use regulations. And then we just wherever we amended the header, we we didn't put the following text in there. So the ellipsis were just highlighted. You draw attention to that.
Does that mean you're going to have to make it to town more get printed in color?
No, I don't think so. I'll see whatever legal wants to do.
Can you just make those go away?
The the less this or the color?
Both. Why, why are they? I don't see the value in there, I think. They're just changing a four word reference in eight different paragraphs.
Would you prefer, would the board prefer, I just eliminated them altogether? I mean, I can.
I don't.
I don't know. I just want whatever's by food buying.
I don't entirely.
Well, you.
I don't know what that would be. Why are they there? Just to delineate between.
Just to show you that there's stuff going on down there.
Stuff going on down there.
That's going to be.
So it's the old John.
Yeah.
Hold on, do you, you're, you're, they're there to show that there's supposed to be paragraphs of language there, right?
That's right.
It's just text. It's text that's not included.
Right, so that's supposedly.
Section three, two, one is more of a natty place of text.
I.
If you want to nuke, I'll do it right now on the.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I think it's.
Inserted text, and we're going to have to add that to the zoning.
What do you mean?
In color.
We'd have, yeah, yeah, we have to add the dots.
And delete all the other text.
Well, not if we call it up.
Okay, yeah, can I, I would say this, I I'll eliminate now if the if legal has some issue with it, that's non substantive. I'll go ahead and make the change.
Chris, are you doing a presentation for this?
I just want to say we're chasing the word table of use regulations to table A dash use regulation.
They're going to say it's your, yes, no, I know.
Different time.
You can just say the language shown is the only references to that language.
Sure, yes.
Or something like that, right? Meaning this is not the entire language of the zoning bylaws. This is just. I think that that's pretty clear.
I think so.
How's that? Great. Okay. And.
All right. You want to do that one now? Sure. I make a motion that we recommend approval to town meeting of the article to amend section three use regulations and to change the reference of quote table of use regulations unquote to quote table A dash use regulation.
And actually so on. The third, we're not replacing all all the strike down ones have different.
Yeah.
No inkling, right, you're.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Able to use.
Maybe just reference that that we're changing the stricken ones and replacing it with.
Yes, we're sorry, yeah, so. All right, motion to recommend approval to town meeting, the article to amend the preferences in section three use regulations regarding the table use to make them all consistent and read table A dash use regulations.
I'll second that. All in favor of a recommendation, please raise your hand. Five zero to recommend.
No, that was, that was like.
Necessary users.
Excuse me. Mixes. Next use definition.
Hey, this was, uh, you guys had no concerns, except that it was a great. Um, anyway, like description.
Excellent, here's a semi.
Yes.
One sort of typo, Bill, song, where it says amend section eleven, you have parentheses, not parentheses, um.
An open quotes, window, close.
Oh, my god.
Amend section eleven, open quote definitions.
No, closed quotes.
And, and then.
You see it?
Close.
Oh, it's, and I'm here, it isn't, oh, yeah, I see, okay, good.
Something better.
That would have been a special meaning.
I'll make a motion to recommend to town meeting. Amending section eleven definitions. To replace the stricken with the underlying text describing mixed use.
I'll second that, all in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. Five zero. Five zero to recommend, Bill.
Okay.
Bicycle parking.
Bicycle, you guys.
Second one to win.
Yeah, we had some changes on this. Uh, the big, uh, yeah, you guys wanted, um. Separation of residential and non residential. Uh, but, and then you wanted, um. Oh, dwelling somewhere, where are we going? Oh, we're dwelling in it, right here, we're dwelling in it. Uh. And guidelines was to be, and this, I got this underlined in lower case.
Hmm, yeah.
Yep.
That was done. Uh, and I think that is everything that you were asking to do on that.
Any questions? You want to try to?
Uh, I'll make a motion to recommend to town meeting the. Amended section six point one parking and loading standards to include the new section. Six point one point sixteen bicycle parking. As, uh, shown here.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. Five zero to recommend bicycle parking.
Yeah.
Bill, last one for now, minimum square footage.
This was the, um, okay, this went back and forth in. You guys. Um. This was the. Oh, this is only the colon, yeah.
Oh, this is the colon, semicolon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's illegal for you on this.
Any other question?
And, and we were talking about removing it from the footnote. Like, you'll get someone, but Rick was adamant on that one. But, um, yeah, so this was the colon, semicolon, colon.
They made an episode of Parks and Rec about this one, I think.
Don't you, before you hang around here, don't you appreciate that show anymore?
Oh, man. It's the real deal. All right, who's up?
All right.
All right, um, motion to recommend that town meeting to amend section four dimension regulations. By deleting the text stricken and inserting the text that is underlined.
That's it.
That's it.
I second that.
All in favor to recommend, please raise your hand. Okay, I will do that, that's, that's, that's four, zero, with an S, with one of same.
Yeah, it's four, one.
Four, one. Okay, are, but.
I'm so embarrassed.
You are honored.
What, what was it? Is it, is it the footnote?
No, you should just vote it no, so it's four, four to one. They seriously, Bill, it's four to one, makes the vote.
Good.
No, did you make it?
Well, true.
All right, next play.
What do you want to do? You want to do inclusionary zoning?
What do you want?
No, no, we gotta do, uh, we didn't do mixed use, I mean, um, uh, ADUs.
I'm so mad about it.
I know, limit, I'm gonna ask Bill and Natalie.
It's gonna be Bill, because Natalie's doing that.
Okay. And here, Bill, I brought this, since you're gonna do this. I brought the, our notes, I don't care, you know, we were, I mean, okay.
Okay, so regarding the, uh. The D one, accessory dwelling units, when last we spoke. We were reacting to the attorney general's, um, findings on the article we passed at town meeting a year ago. Which predated the new state rules regarding that. And the AG gave us a whole bunch of stuff that we needed to change, so we did it. And then someone. Went back to the attorney general and asked them to look at the revised version, and the attorney general decided to wipe out a whole mess of other things that we had. So, all the changes here are driven by the attorney general's office and a new, and the text of this new state law and. Basically, the only thing left that has input from us is that. We're allowed to say as in. Eight point one point three, three, that you can't use this for short term rentals. Um, and also, we're allowed to say that. As in eight point one point three, one, you can't have more than one accessory dwelling unit on the law. Everything else is. It's, it's, everything else we did before is gone, so there were two things that remained from our original article. Everything else has been reworded, consistent with the AG comments and the state law, uh, texts.
We tried.
Questions? In the morning? Oh. Yeah, I'm. I'll motion to make a recommendation to town meeting. Um, to amend section three point one point two of these regulations. Uh, table A use regulations, other uses and. Section, and intend to amend section eight point one of the accessory family terms units. Uh, unit, um, text, any zoning bylaws. As shown in discussed tonight. Um, changes will, uh, we. Inserted text are underlined and deleted text are stricken.
And, and amend section eleven, we tend.
Yeah.
Uh, definitions.
And to amend section eleven point ten of definitions. Um, as shown tonight. Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand.
Oh, you don't know. I'll vote now.
Excellent, we'll take another, we'll take another good vote, all in favor. Please raise your hand.
It's ad con.
You're voting yes?
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Five, five zero, that's the last time we're voting. Five zero to support the recommendation.
Mister Chair, what I would request, thank you for this, would you, um.
Can we close that hearing?
We're gonna close the hearing and double check, I haven't got anybody that popped in, can you just see? Nope.
Okay.
And, uh, let's, I want to close that first hearing for the.
All right, so stop talking, I'll close it. Uh, I, I motion to close the hearing of the proposed bylaw amendments that were previously discussed. I'll thank you for that, thanks. All in favor to close the hearings, please raise your hand. Five zero to close the hearing, Bill.
Thank you.
Um, and I will open up the hearing. Uh, to discuss a proposed, uh, or to recommend, um, a proposed zoning bylaw for. Uh, the spring town meeting in two thousand twenty five for item J one. In the, um, in the agenda tonight for inclusionary zoning. All right, Bill?
All right, this is, this is, this kind of takes away from. The stuff from the last one, but this is really cool. Um, uh, Bill, you, you and Natalie were, this is your brainchild, you guys explain, it's, it's a cool one.
So this is language that will describe that in, uh, developments that. Require affordable housing. The applicant can, instead of doing a certain percentage of affordable units at eighty percent AMI. Can do a lesser percentage of units at sixty, uh, it says thirty to sixty percent AMI. So every, um, sixty percent AMI unit will count as two. Affordable units. That makes sense?
It does, with, after the ten percent.
Yes, after the, the, the total project still needs to, you know, have ten percent affordability within the project. Um, this will. Give more flexibility in terms of creating affordable units within town that are closer to actually affordable than eighty percent AMI is.
And I point out that. And if all this text is existing, we're just changing. Number one point two to two point.
I think this is, I, I, I don't know that anybody else has done this yet, and I, I, I'm really excited to see we get a project and it has. Like, Hillside's coming in with another project, and we're trying to do a whole.
Anyone's gonna come in as at thirty percent?
No, it isn't that thirty.
It says thirty to sixty.
No, I, I, I don't, but I mean, it'd be cool if we go and, and we see we can create some sixty percent units.
Yes.
Any questions on this? Is there, there's still minimum members of the public here, so we do not need to open up public comments right now, members of the public?
No.
What, what?
So, I will motion to amend. Town commander zoning bylaws to include section. Seven point ten point four point one B. Uh, the shown here.
All in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand. It's five zero to recommend, Bill.
Thank you. And that hearing wants to close, but again. We should close that one?
Right, uh, I'll motion to close that hearing.
I second that.
All in favor to close the hearing, please raise your hands. Five zero to close the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Bill. Uh. First his name spelled out?
I did notice that.
No chainsaw?
And so in January, um, Dan, I wanted to reference one. The chair behind the movie.
Oh, right, I started it, you closed it, doesn't matter when you showed up.
It missed the minutes.
I think he joined.
I think he was joined during the PMOD sessions.
No, he's, he's referencing a paragraph before. He's, he's only during the planning of things, I mean, a lot of. Maybe he's good enough, but he's already mentioned there.
What's that?
During the planning of the week, we went from a four O vote to later on a. Five O's on two.
Oh, I know, I always draw my comment, it's good, it's good way to.
Those noted.
It was, I think.
Yeah. Any comments on any of the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January twenty first, twenty twenty five. And February eleventh, twenty twenty five. Double double.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to approve minutes, please raise your hand. Five zero to include the meeting minutes.
Yep.
Bill, liner update.
Yeah, two things, um. Big thing is that I have pulled the trigger. On our, um. PM, I'm calling it PMOD bike and pedestrian improvements. Um, for the grant for, and I, Mass Works, I went for Mass Works. I'm just finishing on getting our letters of support from ADO and J dollars, complete. Uh, design. It's half a million dollars, hopefully we get it, and, um, this one would be good. I think that the way that Mass Works is working now, they're, they're trying to. Use what they call a development continuum, where the. Grants are related to stuff that's already been done and stuff, so we're in a good position for this from, so I'll be curious to see how this works, because this is our second grant. That we built from powder mill quarter road work. So if we get that, um, that'll be, you know, pretty cool. Uh, housing production plan, I'm still waiting on the grant, it's supposed to be issued last week, I was hoping tonight I could announce if we got it. Uh, they said they're delayed on announcing it, um, so hopefully we'll have that next. Um. By our next meeting, I'll let you know as soon as I hear something, and as soon as we do that. Um. We can market a high gear with that, and, um. Um, the other, the only other thing that I have is that, um. No, I, oh, yes, um, I, upcoming items. I've got, so I got some new petitions, a flurry of new petitions, um, nothing, it's, nothing out of the ordinary, uh, but we, we have, um. A couple of, um. Special permits coming up, and we, uh, the, um. Oh, my god, oh, marijuana, it's reading, that's one, it's a, can't think of any of them, rise, it's coming back in for their renewal, which is. You know, again, and this, I, um. Think everything we've got is, is nothing that's, you know, nothing to do with us, the renewals or changes of ownership type kind of thing, so. So it'll leave us plenty of time, my, my plan, if you guys are good with it, is, uh, really. Now, as soon as I get this on ice, we can go full speed on getting our powder mill stuff ready and figure out how we want to do it. I, I'd like to have a meeting where we, we just post it and we talk about, and then we bring DPW into it, and we just figure out how we're gonna, you know. We get everything settled for right away easements and the pedestrian improvements. Um, but I think I, I'm. I like this extra time, we can, we can just really. I like the section of time we can, we can just really dive into it. And that's all I have.
Um on Monday, um FinCom, finance committee asked someone from planning board to join to discuss the proposed town warrant articles that we just discussed. Um I'm happy to go, um if anyone else comes along. It's on Monday.
I I can go, I'm teaching a classroom, if I come remotely, uh if you think of.
If you're performing, if you don't, yeah.
Um I I if, if I didn't, would it?
It's not, it's not anything important.
Yeah, I I prefer not to, but I have a class on Monday, so.
I I I I don't see any reason why you need to attend. Like, if we were proposing to have an overlay district, I think that's helpful for us to have those conversations with US sort of technical experts.
Well, is it a remote meeting?
Yes.
So that I can be standing by, anyway, I'm on, I'm right there, so if there's something pops up, I can monitor it.
When's your class?
It's online.
I know, but what time is it?
It's six to nine, I'm not gonna bother you.
Yeah, you don't need to.
If there's a thing, he doesn't trust you.
Their questions were not.
I did not.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be generous and say that their questions were not complicated.
No, I think there's, yeah, and we just don't want to forget, I I don't know if they, um I sent a a a a note to her today, and I just remembered, because we had inclusionary zoning bylaw, they might understand, they asked a good question on the on the ADUs, you know, they said, well, because somebody read through the law, and they said, well, can we can we restrict the well, they kept by the AG with the numbers, I said, you know, well, we already did it.
That wasn't a good question.
It was a show that they, somebody done work on it, someone was looking at it, it was that we didn't.
We already approved that at town.
We weren't proposing that as a change, so that was the thing, like, we're all supposed to talk about changes. Oh, well, then, okay, you're right, I, but it was to show that they'd read the law.
Yes, that's correct.
Which was, I can't get people to read my applications. It's like the finances, don't, don't file an application without reading this, still, zero hits.
I'm just saying, you know, if we're gonna have the AG look at it twice, we don't need FinCom then weighing in on if it's like legal or not.
That's your, you you're, you're, your point is taken, and you're right. And I'm frustrated as you are, but we got a lot of good done tonight.
And anyone else?
And that's enough.
Do you have lighting standards on here, is it planner update?
Yeah, um so, okay. Oh. Yeah, um, I do something. Um Chris is aware of this, but the rest of you aren't, so I'm gonna, I'll let you all know, I've been working with at the request of the, I think they're actually, they're the dark sky committee, I think, but it's it's a group of residents that's working on dark side um lighting ordinance for the town. Now, we, in our landscaping regulations, we do require dark sky compliant lighting, which is it's good, not a big deal, it's it makes sense. Um, there was um to avoid somebody just kind of saying, well, I wanna make, you know, we wanna make changes, and I wanted to ensure that everybody was aware of what is in place first. So I'm, I've been working with a group on our planning board rules and regulations and the landscape, I said, why don't you take a look through these? Tell us what you think you'd like to change, and we'll come and adopt to the board. And the board, the the board is not gonna want to go haw hog on this stuff, but they're, they wanna hear what you wanna say. So I haven't received that yet, that's why I asked them for the, on that. Chris made it clear, and I agree with him. Um if there is a bylaw change, it should be in the town bylaws, not in the zoning bylaws. Um because it is going to be controversial, and it is not, it's too involved for what we want in our zoning bylaws, the appropriate place would be in the town bylaws, but that it's gonna be detailed. Um it got, the draft they sent me, which is what started I I wanted to make sure that I worked with them a little closer. Um the draft was a a a very ambitious, and I don't know that it would be well received. What I did was the American Planning Association just published uh a twenty twenty five guidebook for dark sky compliant lighting. I purchased it, I gave it to all the um members of the board, it's only of the uh committee, it's twenty five thirty pages, not a big deal. So I have that if anybody wants, I'll be happy to share it with you guys, uh it's 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 model ordinance for how it's done, what they're trying to accomplish, and um so I'm gonna workshop with them this week or next week, I'm gonna workshop, and we're gonna get a purpose down, what they're trying to do, we're gonna look and then look at what they've recommended as for changes for our rules and regulations, if, and if, I'll go through them first, and then I'll bring, let them come to you guys, and they can make it, then we'll see what um they wanna do for the ordinance, but uh if it does go to town bylaws, just for everybody's education, town bylaws go to town meeting, but they're not, we don't you vote on them as residents, but not as a board. Um.
They go to bylaw committee.
Hmm?
They go to bylaw committee.
They go to bylaw committee. Right, but the bylaw committee has, you know, the bylaws are separate from our zoning, right, so we wouldn't be involved with it.
That's right, it's bylaw committee and then rec, and then actually sponsored by the select board.
Hmm, no, bylaw committee is.
They can.
There's their own.
Sponsor.
Yeah.
Nice job supporting them, Bill.
Hmm?
Nice job supporting them.
It's, that's a good thing, it's just, it's gotta be, first thing we wanna do, I told them, we've gotta get a purpose that's easy to understand, it's not what you're trying to do, and they got a great purpose, they they we we went, they set up, so look at us, so.
Yeah, and any compliance, the zoning, zoning person have compliance, that's our town bylaws, that's compliance.
Mm hmm.
Right. That's where it belongs, so. If they wanna do, go down that road. Under dark sky conditions.
They're not a real committee, right? They're just a.
No.
Interesting.
Yes. They're not a formal committee.
Not a formal committee, right? They they may be a a subgroup of working group or something, but.
The tournament. I doubt that, because they're probably not posting or reading.
Uh, that's a good point, no, I don't think they're um.
No, this would be a citizen's petition.
Citizen, yeah. Well, they could go, I think, if the bylaw committee wanted, how does that work, like? Like, if you, the bylaw committee.
You go to the bylaw committee, they ask the bylaw committee to do it.
But they don't need the count like you do with zoning bylaws, right? You don't need like.
Oh, it's not that, off the select word, you know, back down, all that weird stuff, you know? And this is town stuff, you know, we get to do it anyway we want. It's only state stuff.
Oh, oh, okay.
That it?
Can you go, California was great. Going back a little, little week too early.
Yeah, you can.
I got sick out there.
Don't do that.
It's
they're disease vectors, so here, um. Oh, good. All right, I'll make a meeting, I'll make a meeting, I'll make a motion to uh close the, close the meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the closing meeting, please raise your hand. Five zero to close the meeting, uh under one hour tonight.
Well.
Now I'm noticing why I couldn't find any ice melt.
Well, yeah. A horn again.
Where's the eggs?